I see that by the clock on the wall, we're at the top of the hour. I think we have a quorum, so. Call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals hearing. For Wednesday, January 27th, 2021. Take attendance by roll call and then proceed to the legal notice. Chip Darbell, are you here?
I am here.
Did you say me?
He's muted.
Oh.
I'm here.
Amy Wall.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
Mike Feely.
Here.
Thank you. Amy, you have the legal notice?
I do. Ready?
Ready.
All right, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The meeting maybe may not be physically, may not physically attend, sorry, this public may not physically attend this meeting. But every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number. One, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, four, zero, seven, three, two, seven, eight, two, eight, eight. Passcode, eight, seven, six, six, eight, nine. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-one dash thirty-four, forty-nine A Chestnut Street LLC. Application for determination and or finding with respect to a continuation and extension of nonconforming uses under section one ninety dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to permit in addition to be constructed onto an existing dwelling. The property is shown as map twelve lot parcels fifteen B of the assessors map and is located at forty-nine A Chestnut Street. Three, twenty-one dash thirty-five Emerson Street Holdings LLC. An application for a determination and or finding with respect to a continuation and extension of nonconforming uses under section one ninety dash fifty of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to permit in addition to be constructed onto an existing dwelling. The property is shown as map twelve lot parcels one eleven of the assessors map and is located at eight dash ten Emerson Street. Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Okay, so just a couple reminders again for folks who maybe attended some of these Zoom meetings. So in the meeting room, we have disabled the chat feature. As we want to ensure all the discussion for hearings takes place in the meeting room itself. We would ask that whenever possible, everyone share their video and audio in the meeting room as we would do during the regular party carrying. Not required to do so, but if we were all sitting in a meeting room, we'd see your smiling faces. So we'd encourage you to do so, so we can see who we're talking to. But if there's limitations on your end, we understand. The application, the applicants will will open each hearing. The applicants will present their information and testimony. The board will ask questions, we'll read any correspondence we have. And then when we're done, at that point, we will open it up to the public. Until that time, we would ask that everyone please remain muted and I will try to monitor that for any background noise. You can raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and I will try to call on you in the order that I see them. When it comes time for any votes, like we did the opening attendance, we will take them by roll call. So with that, we will proceed to the agenda for the evening. We have received a few notices. There are several continued hearings as well as two new hearings that Amy just read. We've received correspondence from attorneys to continue some of those hearings, so we'll take those up first in case people are here for them. They can choose to stay or they can choose to drop. So the first one is regarding cases twenty-one, twelve, twenty-one, thirteen, and twenty-one, fourteen, six, ten Salem Street LLC. So after the last meeting, it came to light that a butters in Lynnfield may have inadvertently not been noticed properly for the hearings. So we've received a letter from the attorney for the project, Brian McGrath, dated today, requesting that we continue this matter till our meeting on February tenth, 2021. As they are still working on obtaining materials requested by the board. Furthermore, he is requesting respectfully that notice and special notice pursuant to Mass General laws, chapter forty-eight, section eleven, be sent to parties in interest in Lynnfield, Mass. So with that, I would entertain a motion to continue and and
Right.
Notice the special notice sent.
So Mr. Chairman, I move that case numbers twenty-one, twelve, twenty-one, thirteen, twenty-one, fourteen, relating to six, ten Salem Street Wakefield LLC. And the property known and numbered as six, ten Salem Street Wakefield be continued until the board's next meeting on February tenth. And that notice and special notice pursuant to MGL forty-eight, section eleven, be sent to parties of interest in Lynnfield who inadvertently may have not received the notice of these hearings.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Was that, is that something that normally happens or was that just an oversight or?
It was an oversight and Attorney McGrath did consult with our town attorney, Tom Mullin, and determined that there was a path to resolving this and this is what needs to happen.
Okay. Thanks.
And they can watch Zoom meetings of past hearings and get caught up and and then attend the next one after being properly noticed.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Oh.
All right, regular voting members, Chip Darbell.
Yes.
Jim McBain.
Yes.
Amy Wall.
Yes.
Joe Pride.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that is unanimous. So anyone here for six, ten Salem Street? We will hear that as you heard at February tenth, at our February tenth meeting. Next up, regarding case numbers. Are those case numbers right? Yes, sorry, just cross referencing numbers. Case numbers twenty-one dash twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. One sixty, Lexington Street LLC at five twenty-five and five twenty-seven Salem Street. Mr. Chair, and this is from Attorney Brian McGrath, also dated today. Please continue this matter until your meeting on February tenth and that we're still in the process of working on revisions requested by the board.
I move that we continue this till February tenth.
Again.
Discussion. Regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So again, anyone here for that hearing at five twenty-five, five twenty-seven Salem Street will be heard at our February tenth hearing. Next, also from Attorney Brian McGrath dated today, case number twenty-one dash twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. M Bar Wakefield LLC at five hundred Main Street, Wakefield, Mass. Requesting that we continue this matter to our February tenth, 2021 hearing, still in the process of obtaining materials requested by the board.
I move that we continue this till February tenth.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Jim.
Um. As you've seen, I've done a little bit of work that's requested on signage. And there's some open holes in there as far as information. I would, should I basically kind of correspond with Brian to get those questions off to his client? So they can fill in some holes?
I think that's reasonable. Yeah, we would appreciate that if you would approve that, Mr. Chair. Yep, seems reasonable. Thank you, Jim.
All right.
Any other discussion on the motion to continue? Regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that too is unanimous. So five hundred Main Street will be heard at February tenth hearing. Lastly, one of the new hearings for the evening. We've received correspondence from Attorney Michael McCarthy dated January twenty-seventh. Requesting, this is hearing at eight, eight and ten Emerson Street. Asking us to consider requesting the, requesting to continue the as yet unopened public hearing on the petition of Emerson Street Holdings LLC case twenty-one dash thirty-five relating to eight to ten Emerson Street Wakefield, Mass. From this evening to our first hearing in February of this year, which would be February tenth. Continuance is requested in order to allow my client to attend the hearing as he was not able to participate this evening. And this letter will confirm the client's agreement to extend the time for the board's consideration and action on said application for a like period of time.
I move that we continue this to February tenth.
Second.
Any discussion? Regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So if anyone's here for eight to ten Emerson Street, it was a new hearing on our agenda tonight. That will be opened. We plan to open it at our February tenth hearing. Okay, so with those motions passed, our first hearing of the evening, which was the one we were going, we agreed to take up first at the last meeting. In in consideration of the lateness that we got to them last time. They continued hearing twenty-one dash thirty-two and thirty-three, James F. Hutton and Joan H. Hutton at one eleven Greenwood Ave. So welcome back. I see the interested parties here with us. Yes, welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrath, representing the applicant, Ryan Hutton and Jim Hutton are back on on the screen. And also Peter Sandor is our architect on this project, who is on the screen as well. This involves property located at one eleven Greenwood Avenue in Wakefield. The Huttons own that property and they they would like to put on an addition on the back of the residence. We started getting into some detail on that and we realized that we had some conflicting plans that needed to be corrected and revised. So we've had the opportunity to do that. We submitted them to the board and we would like to review those in a little bit of detail tonight, if we may. Sounds good. Right, so if I can share the screen?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, can the board see this?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, this is the existing conditions plan of the Hutton property at one eleven. And you know, basically, this show has proposed addition, it's 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 a deck which we'll we'll get into that's on the back of the house. It's gonna need a variance anyways. I think the the better plan to probably show is in conjunction with Peter's plans. Okay. Yeah, we have the revision date at the fourteenth. Yeah, yeah, here it is. This is the one I want to show. Can you see this plan?
Not yet.
Enjoying your inbox. Your main box, you know, look too close there. Hang on a second. Hang on. Yeah, wait me for a second. Apologize. Okay. See. The best way to do this. Okay.
Brian, I have the packet if you want me to share.
I think I got it. Great, did that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to before Peter hops on, I'm gonna go to the to the site plan. This is the proposed addition that Paul has done. It's got the revision date of one fourteen, twenty-one, as the chair had stated. And basically, there's a deck back here now, virtually in pretty much in the same location. Peter can talk a little bit about that. And when you, just to go through the zoning table pretty quickly on on the changes that are being proposed. The lottery requirement is the board knows in the single residence district is twelve thousand. This is a fairly small lot at twenty-seven, thirty square feet on Greenwood Ave. Frontage is thirty feet. Obviously, those dimensions of the lot aren't changing and the area of the lot are not changing. The current fret setback requirement is twenty feet. It's eight point one. Nothing's happening on the front of the house. Left side yard setback is only three and it is 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 not changing either, okay? And the right side setback is it's at six, two. That's not changing either because the addition is going to be further away. Height of the building is not going over the limit. This is the, this is the issue that needs the, that causes the need for the variance because the current lot, lot coverage's requirement is thirty percent. We meet that requirement currently at twenty-nine percent, but the addition's gonna bump it over to thirty-four point four. And the open space requirement doesn't change. So that's kind of a highlight of the zoning that's happening here. And Peter, I'm gonna let you maybe take it from an architectural standpoint, if you could.
So let me just ask one question, if I could. You need a variance for the lot, not for the width and a finding for the nonconformity.
You got it. Yeah, we need a variance for the variance for the lot coverage, Chip.
Yeah, variance for the lot coverage and a finding for the nonconformity.
Yes, sir. Yeah, two applications.
Yeah.
And probably both parts of the one ninety fifty, great. We're decreasing and if we were, then it's not substantially, so probably. That's right. Both parts, just to, okay. Yeah. With with that, thank you. All right, Peter?
We, when we, last time we met, we had some conflicting information on the site plan where we were showing, I think the setbacks were superimposed, showing that the addition is actually making it worse. Where we worked with Paul, so you can see from the site plan now that it's actually getting better. In in Wakefield, we are able to keep the nonconformity as long as we don't make it worse. But we're exactly, we're taking the deck dimensions and our addition is exactly the same dimensions as what the deck is. It's eight feet, four inches, I believe, wide and eight feet deep, eighteen feet, four inches, I'm sorry. So that Paul shows eighteen point three, three and eight feet deep, we match that. If Brian goes to the next slide, you'll see that we match it in our plan dimensionally. So we're showing what was the deck becoming storage space under, crawl space under with the stairs that go to the backyard and then a playroom. And all of this being done so that we can increase the master bedroom and make it functional up on the second floor. And we show, if you go to the next slide, Brian, we're showing the four elevations, no change in the front, but you can see the addition on the left, the right, and then the most important elevation. Also missing last time is the rear elevation, shows the extension of the roof to a gable with two shed dormers, right and left to allow for headroom. So so now the packet, I think the most important part is the packet relates cohesively with the site plan. And the very first page was a rendering of how it will look in the pack.
Peter, your, your dates are covered by our photos. What's the date on these revised plans?
Ours is dated one twenty-seven, twenty-one today.
Okay.
And we imported, even though Paul's plan is dated the fourteenth, it's in this packet. All all dated one twenty-seven, twenty-one. You'll see it in the upper left corner there. Yep, there it is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Anything else, Brian? No, pretty straightforward. Okay, no, it just seems like we cleaned up the things that got raised at the last meeting. I just want to make sure if there was anything else you wanted to add. Okay, any comments or input from the board?
No.
We have received since the last meeting correspondence from the fire department. Resume, after reviewing the application, there are no objections. Department will make specific recommendations and stipulate requirements once the plans are reviewed by the Fire Prevention Bureau. So that came in on the twentieth after our last hearing. I just want to note that for the record. Once again, any other comments, questions, board members? This one seemed fairly straightforward. And what was being proposed, we just needed to clean up some of the the plans and the details there. If if nothing, I, for this time, I can open up to public testimony. So if any member of the public wishes to make a comment or ask a question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting room and I will try to call on you in order. Just scrolling the list, looking for hands. In pictures, nobody's waving in their screen, okay? All right, seeing none, we'll close it to public testimony. So back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance for lot coverage to be increased by thirty-two, thirty-four point four percent of the lot, which is an increase of nine, eight hundred and nineteen square feet beyond what is allowed. Given the topography and that there's already a deck there should not be an issue.
Second.
No, I was gonna say, do you want to just cite the plans for the record as part of the motion?
Yeah, the the plans PJF Associates did one fourteen, thirty, also part of the package from Sandor's from Peter Sandor, so they did one twenty, from Phoenix Architects, did one twenty-seven, twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Is the, is the date on the survey changed?
It has, it has revision, revision.
Date of one fourteen.
Yeah, right in here.
Okay. All right. I'm good.
Any other discussion? All right. Regular voting members, Chip?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
And I vote yes, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that the proposed addition does not make the nonconformity that exists in this lot any worse. And even if it did, we would find that it would not be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Well, actually, okay, point of order, though, it is making it worse, right, with lot coverage.
Okay, yep, sorry. So in fact, that it does make it worse with lot coverage, which we just granted to the bear, it says it's still not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thank you. I think that's the both parts we needed to capture. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Amy?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Noting the same plans, obviously, previously referenced and yeah, I mean, again, straightforward. So other than the usual conditions potentially, I don't, I don't see the need for anything else in this case. So I'm good. All right, Chip.
You can't condition findings.
Well, yeah, true. It would have been on the variance, but yes.
Yeah. I don't think there were any, right?
No.
No.
No. To Chip, your vote?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Is Jim Hutton basically asking, asking to be recognized? He's got a hand up.
Once, once the vote is closed, I'm a little premature, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that too is unanimous. Okay. So Mr. Art, did you have something quick you wanted to add?
I did. First, first is a thank you for the patience with the board and all those involved. And thank you for the positive consideration and for the relief. I was wondering if it would be possible, since we have signatures from the abutters, if we'd be able to waive any further delay in the demolition and commencement of the project. That way I can certainly keep my, the builder that I want to engage and stay on some reasonable timetable. We've, we've lost a little bit of time.
Jim, that's a building department issue that you and I can talk about. This is Brian.
Okay.
We have to file the decision. There's an appeal period. So there's, you know, there's a procedure here that you can review with Brian offline. But once, once it's clear, the appeal period, you can proceed and request.
All right, very well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board.
You're welcome. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Great.
All right. Okay, so that was it for continued hearings on the agenda now for the new hearing. Case twenty-one dash thirty-four, forty-nine A Chestnut Street LLC at forty-nine A Chestnut Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Michael McCarthy, representing Joe Rosenfield, who's online today, tonight. Also online are Julie and Manny Tavares, who are the project architects. So this, as you noted, is for forty-nine A Chestnut Street. It's an existing, preexisting, nonconforming, three-family structure. There's a proposed rehabilitation that won't change the footprint of the building at all. And the proposed construction would keep the building at three bedrooms. Mr. Rosenfields and Julie and Manny can take you through the plans, both in terms of the the parking layout. I should add, now that I mentioned the parking, that the parking requirements presently are at six. The parking provided presently is at six. And the parking required as a result of the renovations would also be six. So there are six, four of them come off Chestnut Street and two of them come up Emerson Street. That's an existing situation that wouldn't change. So the net result is Mr. Rosenfield bought the property about four, four months ago. Would like to improve the property, put some money into it, make the units nicer, make the building nicer, which hopefully will be a benefit to not only the tenants and Mr. Rosenfield as well, but the neighborhood. The relief that we're requesting is a finding under the second prong, under one ninety fifty, essentially because this is not a one or a two, it's a three family. So the finding that we're, we're requesting would be the proposed change to the existing nonconformity would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, as I said. Parking requirement is met. Really, he's talking about improving the property and for the specifics of what he's proposing, I'll defer with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to the architects, unless the board has any questions of me before they, before they launch into the plans. So Manny and Janine, why don't you, why don't you proceed, please?
You should be able to take screen share, everyone should.
They should be. Yep, we practiced it today.
We did.
My daughter is gonna take over for me, so. This is my next.
So I have, if I'm looking the other way, it's because I'm using a screen that doesn't have a webcam, so just bear with me. I'm gonna share the documents now. First, I'm gonna share the parking. Or I'm sorry, this is the plot plan, the existing plot plan, right? So we're not changing the footprint like Mike had discussed. You share, so then we open. All right, so that's that. Sorry, I'm like new at this. Files, desktop. How do I get this?
I might be able to do it, Julian Newman, try.
Yeah, do you mind?
I don't mind.
Sorry, I don't know why it's not, it's not allowing me to share the screen again. It's, I mean, I can, I can share the rendering for some reason, but not the drawings.
Something's coming up.
Yeah, that's me. All right, so there's the, can you see that?
No.
No.
Oh, that's.
Blank. Blank page.
Yeah, all right, hold on, let me try one. Okay.
Says you're saying, okay, we can see it.
Okay, so that's the front view of the house. Let me see if I can get the jaw drawings here. How come I can't show this, though?
You gotta just.
Nice. It's, it's only allowing me to show one at a time. I don't know why.
You can go through the fourth one.
I don't, how do I? Sorry, guys. I don't know. It says select window or application that you want to share. Anybody have any idea of how to get to the desktop? Oh, can you see this?
So that's.
So, Mike, okay, thanks. Okay, all right. Yeah, so, yeah, Mike, if you can just like click through, I'll describe since you have it open. So this is the parking plan, like we had said, two parking spots existing in the rear of the house, which is on Emerson Street and four in the front. There is ability to add two more on the left side here on the. There is ability to add two more on the left side here on the front if we needed to. But obviously, we would want to have a good amount of green space and keep the landscaping back there if possible to kind of serve those needs. And like Mike had said before, we're not changing any of the footprint. We are adding just re kind of locating a porch on the right side, doing a little driveway pathway so that the porch comes up on the rear of the house. Yeah, you can skip through these. These are just all the as-built. Okay, so that's the front. So basically here, you can see the existing condition on the left, on the, this is the right side elevation at the bottom. You can see that we're basically, Mike, can you scroll a couple more? These are still the as-built. Keep going. Okay, keep going. Let's go right here. So now, oh, go back one?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so that's the front elevation again. Basically, we would be adding, right now, there's a gable roof on the front. We would love to make it a flat roof to get some extra head height up there. That's the top right, front elevation on the right side. We're basically adding a little, a little addition on top of the existing structure in the rear. And then basically, like I said, the the flat roof on the third floor, and that's it. So basically, we're keeping the existing structure as is, just adding a second floor addition in the back, and then a third floor, a new roof addition.
So can you just explain what's happening with the window pillars if you if you are on the front? I mean, right now, there's two bay windows which aren't square, and you're coming to two square shaped window.
Yeah, Mike, do you mind going to the rendering?
Oh, sure, yeah. Yeah, I know it's picky and minute, but it seems to me that this changes the footprint minimally.
No, no, the the footprint doesn't change at all. Oh, you mean this where the front stairs are?
To the right and left of the front stair.
Oh, yeah.
Under those windows chain?
Yeah, I got, well, so to the existing stairs, we would keep, but we have to do like a little bit of an infill there to widen the platform. So yes, that's a change.
I'm talking about to the right and left.
Of the house itself?
The house itself. You have two bay windows now.
Yep, those are existing now.
And they're square?
They're they're kind of like at an angle, and we're just squaring them off.
Right, so does that not change the footprint?
It doesn't because they're floating. There's no foundation underneath them.
And there's going to be no foundation?
No.
Okay.
Mike, can you mind opening the rendering?
Carried all the way down to the ground in your rendering.
In the exist, no, they shouldn't. Let me, can you?
Uh, yeah, let me try, hold on, sorry.
I can see if I can open it back up. I don't know why.
All right, yeah, let me get out.
Okay. This stinks. We practiced this this morning, and now it's all right. Technology, you know?
Let me try.
Okay. If not, I think I, I know I'm able to.
I got it.
I don't understand how to get.
That come up?
Yeah, perfect. So under these, basically, there is no foundation under these there. It's it's floating, you know, because these ones, we can basically dig out that existing foundation that's at an angle. Yeah, it's like an overhang, exactly, an overhang. Doesn't need to touch the ground.
Maybe just because of landscaping there, just.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little hidden. If you go to, if you go to the floor plans, Mike, yeah, it's like an overhang bay window.
All right.
If you go, yeah, if you want to show the floor plans, I can point it out on those. They're A one, A two. A one point one, like all of those.
Yep, sorry.
I don't understand why I can't get to these files. Like, how do you get to them?
Does that come up? Did that come up?
No, not yet.
I tried to share the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and I I wasn't able to. I don't know if something's going on in the Zoom meeting tonight, Kale. Maybe just.
About that?
Starting to.
Yep, perfect. Okay, so I scroll up. And keep going. Keep going. Go to basement, so two more. Right there. So see how they're, oh, see it? At the bottom, sorry. Of this, of the bottom of the screen, those are dotted, so those aren't touching the ground. The existing foundation that's there is a crawl space, and we can take that out. So we wouldn't be damaging, or we wouldn't be building on that existing foundation. We would just use that as landscaping. And nothing else, like if, Mike, if you zoom out a little bit on this basement, you can see that nothing else on the footprint is changing. We're filling in, you know, an existing hole on the right for like a stair that kind of goes down, that will be removed. And that's about it. And then as the dash lines above, you see like, those are all those like little new porches or deck like, you know, walking areas to get up to all the entry points.
Okay.
Do you need, yep.
By the, by the looks, by the looks of the foundation, those either side has foundation under it. It's not like the level above is not suspended over, it's sitting on a on a foundation, so I'm not sure I'm getting the picture here.
They're eliminating those crawl space foundations.
Yes.
Having those windows hang.
Yes.
They're not really foundation, Jim, they're just old decrepit things that those windows don't really sit on, that just are under them.
Well, it had to be some sort of foundation of a stair and opening used to go through on the right. Down to the level.
Yeah, that's gonna be removed. That's, it's in the ground. It's like, you know, like an access to the basement stair.
I understand that. I understand that, but are you getting rid of all the foundation in that little node?
No, no, we're just gonna fill in that foundation. So instead of there being a doorway to go down there, it's gonna be filled in.
I understand. But the rest of the building sitting on a foundation that is there, right?
Yep, entire, the entire existing foundation is not being touched. The only thing is that that little area is this, is like, you know, is like, where a bulkhead would be.
Right.
That's all that is. So that that's, that's being removed. That's not, the existing house doesn't actually sit on that. That's just a bulkhead.
All right.
Okay, did board members want to see any other page? I know we have copies in front of us, but you want to see anything else on the screen? Just for clarity. Yeah, I mean, the key is that the footprint doesn't change to meet the requirements for this finding.
Yes.
Right.
You know, but the porch on that right side, the front porch, you said, just the the part that's recessed is widening to make the two entrances or, but the porch itself is staying as is, is that what you said?
Yeah, so we're gonna try and use the existing brick stairs with that existing plat, the concrete platform, and do the best we can to kind of angle it back. So we're not going forward, we're kind of angling back against the new like overhangs of the house, just to widen the platform so it's safer. And also, you know, fix the brick stairs. They're a little decrepit now, so we're, you know, clean them up and fix it if it needs to be kind of little concrete here and there, you know?
Okay. Anything else, board members? I know we look at renderings and we want to get into architecture and landscaping and all the rest, but again, given what proposed here. What's that?
Just a finding.
I know, so it's just a finding. But in the key criteria is there is it just we're not changing the the structure.
I'm having difficulty not speaking.
Thank you for that, Jim.
Agreed.
Let's see, just so while folks contemplate any other comments, we did receive correspondence from the Concom stating for the record, the project is outside their jurisdiction, so won't require further review. And then the fire department have no objections to the project as presented. A will make specific recommendations and stipulate requirements once the plans are reviewed by the Fire Prevention Bureau. So that was the correspondence we received. There was also a letter from the DPW Town Engineer. There's some comments here, underground utilities. Mike, have you seen this letter?
I haven't, but but will comply with whatever, you know, the town requirements are, the regulations are.
Sprinklers. Just utilities. Consideration of working with the department. Construction, right-of-way permits, et cetera, typical stuff we we see on these applications. The existing building has six bedrooms, according to the town assessor's office. The proposed architectural plans show nine bedrooms. The DPW requires the applicant submit a server wind flow INI fee, so yeah, the INI fees, but is is there a difference there? I mean, again, it's just to the internal, so are you reconfiguring adding bedrooms?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
The packing?
It does not, no.
No.
Okay.
No, I've done the math, and I have it in front of me. It's, the requirement is five point five.
Okay.
For, yeah, three units?
Three units.
Three units.
Because one, three bedrooms require two and one to two bedrooms, yeah.
Yeah, it's five point five, even if you want two per unit, which you would, for a one or a two, it's the six is there. But it comes to five point five, which is six, so.
Okay, no, that's all that was in their letter, just, you probably review the details, just make sure there's anything you need to address as part of your final plans. Anything else, board members? Okay, so why don't we open it up to public testimony? So if anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, and I will call on you.
There's a couple of hands up. I don't know if you're seeing them.
I see Joanne Marks, okay. You can unmute yourself if you want.
Hello, I'm Joanne Marks. I live at thirty two Emerson Street, which is across diagonal from the property on the Emerson Street side. And so I'm here because I got noticed, I think, as a neighbor. There was, and I'm, and I'm not sure that my comments are even appropriate for the board, but I will share them, and then you can tell me whether or not. But first, I'd like to say I am. I appreciate that there's work being done on this property. I think that there's definitely room for improvement in the in the building. But I also have a question about the third floor. Because it seems to me, I see the kind of the side view of the house from my property, and it's, it's currently, I think the term's gabled, like the rest of the, most of the street, and I think extending the flat or creating a flat roof seems to be actually a really big extension of the third floor. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but it does seem like a really big change on the third floor property or part of the property. And again, I don't know if that is even what's being discussed here tonight, so I can respect the fact that maybe that's not it. But I do want to draw your attention to that, if it is something that the board will consider. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, can we just confirm the height of the new building? Is it the roof being changed, but still peak meeting what's there today or meeting the requirement in that zone?
It's meeting the requirement in the zone.
Which is thirty five feet.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. We're actually coming in at thirty four feet eight, and we're only going up. So it's, it's, it's around exactly the same peak as existing. Just if, I don't know if that helps for the height there. We're not exceeding that thirty five feet. But it is a flat roof.
Ms. Marks, any other comments or questions? That was it just around the roof? Okay, I see you're nodding. Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the meeting room?
There's another hand up, Dave. It is, it's another Joanne Schuler, if I'm saying it right.
Why don't I see them?
She has a virtual hand raise.
Okay, thank you. Now I just see the hand go up. Okay. Please go ahead, just please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Joanne Schuler. I live at fifty one A Chestnut Street. And I have a couple of questions. First, the distance from the sidewalk in the front. Can you talk about what the, how much frontage there is with the new plan?
Put the drawing back up just to visualize.
So that would be the the so-called parking plan, right?
Yeah, the plaque.
Not the parking plan, the front entrance and the new.
The elevation, the picture, so to speak, this thing? That one?
The setback from the sidewalk, can you tell me how far the distances between the sidewalk and the the windows, those front two windows on the side of the doors? Because those are the ones replacing the bay windows.
Can you handle that?
Yeah, yeah, I can handle that. Yep, so the the existing ones go out now. I'm not going any further than what they go out now. The only thing I'm doing is taking the foundation out of there. So they're not going any further, and we're not, like, the stair, the existing stair in the front is staying exactly where it is, not going out any further, and not going out any further on those bay windows that are there now. All we're doing is squaring them off. So instead of them being angled like previously, they're gonna be square.
So they stick out now, so there's, there's.
They stick out.
Meet them in the new plan.
No, no, so they stick out right now, exactly how they are. There's a foundation underneath them, and those stick out right in the existing house. The new design does not, does not go any further than that where it is right now, and there's nothing underneath the bottom of it. It's just, it is an overhang. So there's gonna be landscaping underneath it.
Yeah, what's the frontage from, from the building to the sidewalk?
Same as it is now, it doesn't change.
It doesn't change, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's nonconforming now, so.
Correct, right.
That's why we're going for the variance.
No.
Or a special permit.
Lined in.
Yeah.
No, no.
That's what I mean.
Is there a zoning table on the package, Mike? Is there a zoning table on the package?
I'm sorry, Dave.
Is there a zone? I didn't see a zoning table. Is there one in the package that I may have missed?
No, there's no table.
Just stating existing conditions and.
Yeah, yeah, because we're not changing.
You're not changing, but so whatever nonconformities exist today, you're not changing them.
That's right.
The width, the.
Footprint of the structure is not changing at all.
At all, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I have two more questions. One being, do you know the percentage of the land that the building is taking?
Same as it is now. Yeah, it's not.
Okay, well, yeah, again, it's nonconforming, so I think the guidelines are that it's thirty five or forty percent of the land that it's supposed to be taking up, and it looks like the floor area is significantly increasing with that third floor with the thirty five foot, because you're raising it up, right?
The, we're not, to the first point, in terms of the coverage, we're not changing the coverage at all. So we're not asking any relief there, and we're not asking any relief from floor area ratios, which actually don't apply here. So we're not asking for any relief regarding that at all. No changes there.
I I thought I understood from the question that Joanne Marks asked about the third floor raising it up significantly. It sounds like the total floor area of the building, the structure, the internal interior floor area is increasing.
Floor area ratio doesn't, doesn't apply in the general residence district, so it's not a factor here.
What do you mean it doesn't apply?
There is no floor area ratio requirement in the general residence district.
Okay, do you know what the floor area is in the new compared to the old?
Nope.
I can, I can maybe speak a little bit to that. I don't know exactly what the square feet is. But I do know that the area where that gable sits, all I'm doing is squaring that part off. We're not going over, like, the whole roof isn't getting squared off all the way to the back of the rear of the building. So I think you guys got to understand that, that where the, where the gable is, it's just going to be a flat roof there. And then it's going to step down, just like that house does now. There's a little piece in the back that's, that jogs out, and that's it. So it's exact same design that's there. It's just going to be a flat roof. And, you know, instead of it being angled walls to be able to get the head height there for the rooms upstairs, you know, we decided to go with a, a flat roof.
Do you, does that, I mean, just seems to me from a practicality standpoint that a flat roof poses more problems than a sloped roof?
No, as long as we have the required drainage and, you know, all of that is taken care of. We have downspouts and all of that, you know, that, that's all taken care of as far as that goes.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
That's it for me.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? One last time, I'll make sure visually, no hands waving. I think in the Zoom meeting participant list, okay. So closing the public testimony, back to the board. Comments, questions, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find, in the case of forty-nine A Chestnut Street, that the proposed plans that were presented to us this evening do, actually, because there's no floor print, doesn't make, continues the non-conformity exactly as it is, and the changes are not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Second.
Thank you. And we'll reference the applicable plans as noted in the record. There were no updates.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Any comments on the motion? Okay, regular voting, members, Chip?
Aye.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Pass my vote to somebody else.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that is unanimous. That here, Dave, Chip, Amy, Joe, Tom. Okay, so that is unanimous. You have your finding. Good luck to you.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the other new hearing was the one we continued early on. Any other matters, board members? Clerk's report, we're good, Amy, for now? Nothing? Okay.
Nothing.
Alright. You got none. Alright, item six, approval of minutes of January thirteenth, twenty twenty.
And we approve the minutes as written for January thirteenth.
Second.
Twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? In favor, Chip?
Yep.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Well done, Gail. Any other matters this evening, board members?
Yes, sir, I do. I'd like to move to adjourn.
Do I have a second on that motion? Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you, sorry. Any discussion?
Oh, quick, you didn't notice it.
Yes. All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Alright. We are in adjournment. Thank you for your time this evening, board members and members of the public, and Gail. Have a good evening.
Everybody be safe.
Thanks. Don't turn out like me.